Right, you can't, either can't replace.
Right.
Because it's hidden, the Senate more than this.
Yeah. But sometimes reads like this guy is a man who keep in his seat or paragraph. I was gonna ask, I mean, God forbid the, the uh, Village Board.
I could just see.
All right, folks, it's five o'clock. Let me call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, July eleventh, two, twenty twenty-two to order. Candy, can we have the roll, please?
Elo.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Campan.
Here.
And Munch.
Here.
And for the record, Fashion and Jacobson are absent.
Okay. All right, we'll go to three, which is approval of the June twentieth, twenty twenty-two Village Board meeting minutes. We're in our packet, I'll take a motion in a second to approve. Amanda and Mike, any discussion from anybody? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Public appearances, items are for discussion, possible action. Four A is presentation and review of new library building priorities. Jennifer?
Hi, good evening. And this is to follow up on the discussion that was had at the past Village Board meeting. I believe that was six twenty, and I apologize I wasn't able to make it that night. But we did have a request for information from a trustee about priorities for the project. Should additional funds be available and how we would use those? So I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Vine, who's our owner's representative, who's gonna answer any questions in response to that information that was provided in the packet.
All right, Jeff, name, address, serial number.
So I'm Jeff Vine, I'm the owner's representative for the new library project. Uh, the last time we were here, we had some discussions about the geothermal and the PV, and then the questions became, are there other items or what would the order be of those items if we had more funding that we raised or that would come from the village? So we submitted a list of priorities, and if there's questions, I can answer those for you tonight.
Can, Jeff, can you, can you put them up? If you don't mind.
Priorities?
Yeah, right there.
Yep.
It's in our packet, I'm sure everybody saw.
Yeah, it looks like it's page fourteen in the packet, if anybody's trying to locate it.
All right, any, yeah, Amanda's got a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, if I remember correctly, we talked about when we added back in square foot, square footage, I guess, if that happened, that that would allow us to add in the gender neutral bathroom for the community area? Okay.
Thank you for, thank you for asking that question. Our architect's been working very carefully on trying to make that work and has come up with a solution to keep that in the project at the square footage that we have now. Um, so that item has been addressed and included in the project where we stand at this current point.
Okay, and just to clarify that, for the community room area, we already have gender neutral bedrooms for the rest of the library.
Correct, the building code stipulates a certain number of restroom stalls required per square footage and per use of building. Um, and so we are currently meeting that code, and that includes a family restroom that would be accessible off of the main restroom area, which is next to the community and meeting room. So it would be available to anybody right off the main lobby. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Mike?
So with interest rates going up, in your experience, how long will that take until it starts driving construction costs down?
Until it starts driving costs down?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think we're gonna see that by the middle of October when we bid. We, we might see a little bit of a slowdown, but contractors that are of the magnitude for a project, you know, a ten million dollar project, they've got quite a large backlog, so it takes time to, to work that off, so. It's anybody's guess. We are, we are gonna go out and do another estimate. We have our design development drawings based on this new plan with the smaller footprint are gonna be ready to go back to the estimator, um, the twenty second of this month. Uh, and so two weeks later, we'll have an updated budget that'll try to reestimate the changes that we've been making here over the last couple of months.
And they're walking through that plan tomorrow night at the library building meeting, is that correct?
Yes, so we have a library building committee meeting tomorrow night at five thirty at the senior center. So we'll be reviewing the updated floor plans, site plans, and exteriors based on the value engineering changes, um, and just changes to make sure our plans align with the budget.
So trustees that wanna know could go there and.
Yes, if it's properly noticed, any trustees interested in attending could, are welcome, are welcome to show up.
All right, yeah, Amanda, another one?
Um, yeah, I guess, um, I'm wondering, because this is a, under discussion and possible action, are we, um, there, there's definitely some things that I think I would really like to see put back in the, in the library budget with additional funds. And I don't know if, is Ellers, is Ellers here tonight for another item or anything? I'd like to, yeah, okay. I'm trying to figure out, you know, how, what it would, I need more information. I need more information about how this would affect the, the tax rolls if we allocated more money for the library, because this isn't the fault of the library or anything. Construction costs have just gone up. If, if construction costs hadn't gone up by fifty percent in the last few years, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here asking for more money. I mean, we would've been on budget. So this is circumstances beyond the library's control. And like that, that two thousand square feet in the children's area, I'd really like to see that. Frankly, I'd like to see it all put back, but, you know, I'm trying to be realistic here and I just, I guess I'm wondering how we can find out, uh, what it would look like to allocate more money? How does that affect our roles?
So, so Amanda, let me just say something that might, I, I'm, suggestion, I'm wondering if we should wait and see what the, the next round of bids come in? Don't you think that would be appropriate first to see how, how they come in before we start looking for more money?
Well, I, I'm not sure how much difference they'll be, I guess that's a question for, for Jeff, whether you think the difference will be a lot or a little or.
Well, they're not, it won't be bids, it'll be our professional estimators gonna reestimate the plans. And it's mostly based on quantity-based estimating, so, um, you, you know, I don't think that in the short period of time since we had the last estimate, I don't think he's changing his unit prices. I don't think that he's, um, thinking that the market's significantly, you know, come down. But what he is gonna do is he's gonna re-quantify everything. Um, and, you know, we've been, we've been making moves and cutting things out and trying to lower the level of, you know, certain finishes and different things to get to the budget. Now he's gonna take all of that into, into account, take two weeks, come back to us and say, okay, here's what you did. This is, you know, this is the result of the changes that were made. The price is definitely gonna come down, and it's, it's gonna get to the, the budget that we've targeted to get to because we've made significant changes. So, yeah, I think his estimate will come back and it'll be in line with the, with, with what we have to spend. The question is, is, would still be at that time, would be, you know, now's the time when we build the library the first time. Now would be the time that maybe some of these things are considered. But if it comes back and it's, if it's under the new targeted budget, then maybe we have, we find extra dollars for some of these items.
And so if we don't, I mean, I guess I'm trying to gauge the temperature of the board for, for possibly allocating more money if, you know, there's things that we need to see back in the library. And I mean, I sit on the library building committee, and the, the missing two thousand square foot of children's space, it's, it's pretty glaring, I'm sorry, but it is. I, I feel like that's something that really needs to be back in there. You know, any more space that we can add is important, but that is particularly, um, I notice, I notice it. I'll just say that, I've seen the various plans, and I think that that space is really needed.
So, um, as long as we're talking, I'll, I'll be, I'll be honest where I'm at. And I've given this a lot of thought, we did ten million, we did another six hundred thousand. I, I'm comfortable with that, with that amount, those two, we just added six hundred thousand. Uh, for me, that's, that's kind of my limit, where I think we should go. If we have to try to find my, more grants or whatever, I think that's, that's, but I'm just thinking of all the projects that we have to do, ten-six is, is kind of it for me. So you asked, so I'm just being honest about it, so. I don't know how the rest feel. Mike?
Yeah, um, I hate to say it, that's probably where I'm at, too. The, the reason being, when I look at the capital improvement projects that we have on the plate, there's in excess of seventy-two million dollars of projects in the next five years, which not only blows our tax base, but blows our ability to borrow. I don't think we can put all of our eggs in this basket. I would, I, I'm regretful about it. I would hope that, that the architects are designing it in a way that, you know, when we come into money in the future, that we can add onto the project and add on to the library, and it's easily expandable, but I just don't see where we get the money now.
Okay. Yeah, Derek?
Yeah, I'm on board with that, too. I, I, I think we borrowed as much as can or should, or maybe even a little bit more than what we should for the project, um, just to kind of piggyback on Mike's architecture point. I'd like to, Jennifer, I don't know if you can reach out to the observer, because I noticed that all their articles are still using the old conceptual drawings. I think it'd probably be beneficial to get out there to the public what the new ones are that were in the last planning commission package. So I, if you can reach out to them, it'd probably be good for them to not publish the old picture anymore.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, we're, we just, we've been hesitant to put them out until they're finalized because we didn't wanna seem like we were changing things. Um, so we were kind of waiting until they were finalized to put them out there. And so I, I understand your point, I just wanna explain why, that we were kind of waiting until they were, where they were gonna be instead of changing again, so.
Understood, but I think people need to have a realization of what the building that they're looking at now is compared to what it was.
Yeah, that should be forthcoming, I'd say in the next couple of weeks for sure. Um, and we'll try to get it out sooner rather than later. Thank you for sharing that comment.
Thank you.
So, just one comment I, I wanna make, too. I mean, I, I am certainly willing, Jennifer knows this, I'm willing to sort of help look for more, more grants, whatever we can do. I'm, I mean, I certainly support the library, but I'm just sort of, I, I just think I'm at my limit for, for what we're gonna provide the library, given that we got the senior center coming up and other things. So I, I wanna extend that to you, that I'm willing to, some people think I'm a good grant writer, I kinda am, and I'll, I'll help however I can to find, find more funds.
We certainly appreciate the funding we've gotten so far, so I wanna just say thank you for the village support that we have received. We are certainly trying to make best use of every dollar we have, trying to make sure that the design the architects have are the best use of space now, and then also plan for the future and future expansion. Um, a number of these items could be added back if, if we were able to raise funds in the next three months. You know, we could easily add them back, some are time-sensitive and might, we, we wouldn't be able to add back after we get too far along. Um, but we'll certainly try to do everything we can to, um, make best use of dollars and add any elements that we possibly can with a focus on that priority number one that Amanda mentioned, and try to, try to get that space, um, a little bit closer to where we'd like it to be. So, um, appreciate your conversation.
Yeah, Derek?
Just one question, can you walk me through the timeline for the next couple of months?
Um, Jeff, could you do that, please?
Sure, so, uh, we, we've got this design development, which is the next phase of design, is gonna be complete on the twenty-second of July. At the same time, we're gonna be submitting the formal site plan submittal to the plan commission, so that'll include the site design, all the stormwater, all of the technical civil engineering stuff, and then the exterior of the building as well, uh, for them to approve all of that. Uh, and then we have, uh, we're set up for, I think, the first, like around the eighth of, uh, August, we're gonna submit the, the final set of plans to, for Village Board, and then have both our budget at that time and those plans approved. And then, I don't know if I have my schedule in front of me, I think I do.
So that'll be your, your August fifteenth meeting will be presenting where the floor plans are, where the exteriors are, where revenue and, and the expected expenditures are, so you can see how all that aligns up, um, at that point.
Right, and then, um, the, you know, the, all the details of the plans for the bid package wouldn't quite be ready yet, so we're planning on having that. If we would receive your approval for both the budget and the, and the plans, minus some of the final details, it would actually go out to bid September twelfth. The bid would come back on September twenty-ninth. Uh, because we've, we've got a tight timeframe where we would like to, if the bid, if the bid comes back and it's within our budget, we would like the Village Board to approve awarding that contract on October third, so that we could start construction the middle of October. If we miss that October third, I think there's a, a lag, um, until the, the next meeting date. Instead of two weeks, it's three weeks, right? Is that the timeframe?
I think, yeah, otherwise we'd have to wait, we felt, to follow your meeting cycle, there'd be a delay of two weeks. And so we really wanna get the project out to bid, so we can start construction this fall, out of concern that prices will go up longer the project waits, so that there's a real chance that costs will go up if the project's not bid till spring, so we really wanna try to get it moving forward this fall.
Okay. And Phil, anybody else, you, you wanna chime in?
No.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right. All right, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to four B, which is public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody, we, I know we got a couple folks who would like to speak. Mike, do you wanna start out?
Sure.
Let me tell us your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Barone, I'm at six-three-one Bergamont Boulevard here in the village of Oregon. Um, I'm here representing pickleball, and many of the folks behind me are here to support the pickleball agenda. Who's, who's here for pickleball? Quite, quite a few, and you're gonna see some people wandering in and out, because I was supposed to be on the agenda later, so that's, uh, don't mind people going back and forth. Um, normally Jerome Klein is here with me, but he's on vacation with his wife, Deanne, and they're probably watching on TV. I wanted to thank you for allowing us to present another time. Um, this is probably the third time in the last couple of months, and I'm not gonna bore you with all the details of our, our past meetings, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep moving forward with that. I wanted you to know, though, that we definitely have heard the message. We've met with, with Randy and Martin and Lisa and Jeff. We've heard the message to keep the project moving forward. We have to keep fundraising and trying to get grants as, as best we can. And, um, I'm here to tell you, we have been working on that diligently. In the packet, you have a fact sheet, a one-page fact sheet, and I'll loop back to that with just a couple salient points. You also have a petition that's in there. Uh, the petition was, uh, with the, the signatures that are on there was signed by three hundred and eighty-six people. Um, and since then, we've actually received more petitions, because we've had a number of people that are in the audience going out, uh, getting signatures. We're now up to four hundred and twenty. And in the, uh, the spirit of openness, um, I'll tell you that not everybody is a village resident that signed the petition. If I were to take a guess, I would say probably a fifty-fifty split. But I think what's important with that is that the residents want it, and also the pickleball players, as I've mentioned in past meetings, uh, wanna have a place to play, and many of them come from out of town or out of, out of our village, and they spend money in the village. So there's an economic benefit to having pickleball players come into the village. The, why am I here right now in front of you? It's to ask again to consider pickleball in phase one of the park project. Why is this important? I'm not gonna go into all the health and wellness benefits, we, we've talked to that ad nauseam. Uh, what I really wanna talk about is the current courts, the, uh, the Oak Street courts are in disrepair, and they're not gonna last much longer. Uh, we do know that, um, Jeff has put in a grant to the DNR, um, and he's got money in the, uh, ten-year capital improvement plan to potentially take care of the courts in two thousand and twenty-three. But we know it's a grant, and we've talked about grants before, you don't know if it's gonna come to fruition or not. Jeff also has in, and I'm assuming, Jeff, you put these projects in there, but, uh, there is a two-point-five million dollar capital project in the, for next year to take care of phase two of the park project. As you, the board has talked in previous meetings, you would love to be able to have the financing to do that next year, but from a finance and a timing perspective, there's no guarantees that it's actually gonna happen. So that's why we're here to ask, uh, for the ask to consider putting back pickleball into phase one of this project. There was also some, um, talk about when the high school courts, um, get resurfaced, that they would be surfaced for dual use, both tennis and pickleball. I don't know if that's gonna happen, I don't know the timing of that, and the pickleball community can't control that. Plus, the high school would give priority over anything the pickleball community would, would wanna do. So again, it re-emphasizes the importance of having a dedicated pickleball court in the park project. Uh, we have, we have raised, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, um, in commitments with the, uh, with the thought that, um, the commitments would be, would come forward if the park project puts pickleball back into phase one. So with the seven thousand five hundred dollars that Lisa verified for us before that we raised during the COVID years, we now have, uh, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars that's been committed to the project. That thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars actually represents about eighteen percent of the current cost of the, uh, construction for the courts. And that is far more than any of the other sports organizations have been able to bring forward for any of their part of the project. And, uh, and actually, I'm gonna make a little bit of a correction, because this afternoon I received another five hundred dollar, uh, commitment. So that really puts us up to thirty-three thousand dollars as a commitment to the, to the project. We are also still working with businesses, and I prefer not to answer any questions around which businesses, because they haven't committed yet, and I don't wanna throw them. and I don't want to throw them into a, into a bad light within the community. But we're working with some businesses for some major contributions. We are still looking at grants. I, I'm in front of the Economic, Oregon Economic Tourism Board on Wednesday, and hopefully talk about a grant that'll come forward in that time. And there's also two other grants that we missed the deadline for in two thousand and twenty-two, which we have on the calendar for two thousand and twenty-three. I also want to talk just for a minute about, Jeff was kind enough about a week and a half ago to indulge Jerome and myself in a meeting with Rettler, who is the engineering company that designed the park system. We wanted to just have a conversation as pickleball players, taking off my engineer hat, as pickleball players, to make sure that the design was adequate, and maybe there was some opportunities to save some money. I'm here to tell you that I think Rettler did a fantastic job on the design. They, we did make some suggestions to take a little bit of money out of there, but then we also made some suggestions to make the courts what I would call world-class. In, in the spirit of, certainly in openness, there could be a little bit of an uptick in cost between inflation and some of the design changes we made, to the current bid that's out there, one-seventy-eight, roughly five-hundred-thousand dollars. I don't know what that uptick could be. We talked about it, but maybe Jeff has some insight into that a little bit later. So, in, in closing, I just want to impress upon the board that the village and the school system has done a wonderful job over the years of making sure the high school facilities are upgraded. Our teens have great facilities. This park project is going to be wonderful for the youth sports in our, in our community, but we're still lagging a little bit behind in adult sports. And this is a great opportunity to make sure we have an adult sport and a family sport that we can be proud of, and we can get the community involved. Anecdotally, I do have a couple of quick things I just want to mention. I don't know if anybody watches the NBC National News, but two weeks ago, Lester Holt, who is a National News anchor, had on a quick piece about kids pickleball. And it was a two- or three-minute blurb, and the whole thing was about young kids, eight, nine, ten years old, that are jumping into the sport and having a blast. They didn't follow any of the rules, but they were out there giggling and laughing and just having a great time. And we're seeing the same thing take place in our courts. You probably saw the, the article in the Oregon Observer this past week. The Schmidt family was featured there. They got together for the Fourth of July as a family reunion. I happened to be driving my bike, riding my bike by there, and I stopped and was talking to them, and I took some pictures. And they were having a blast. There was actually three generations of them. The third generation was sleeping in the grass, but there were three generations. There was also, a week ago, on Channel twenty-seven, the local channel, they did a piece on pickleball out at Garner Park in Madison. And it was really around the growth of pickleball in the Madison area. I think I've mentioned to you the Capital Area Pickleball Association, which I'm on the Board of Directors. The, the president of our organization was on there. We've seen a growth from when we started the organization, a hundred and forty players to over eight-hundred today in just a few short years. And then, the other day, I was also going by there. Two, two more quick stories. The other day, I was going by there and getting ready to set up for our community nights, and there were three teenage girls playing pickleball down at the end, laughing and giggling and having a blast. And watching them play, you could see they had paddle skills, racket skills. So, I went down and talked to them, and I said, "You look like tennis players." And they were. They were high school tennis players. They admitted they had no idea what they were doing playing pickleball, but they were having a blast, and they were just talking trash to each other, and just running around having a great time. And last but not least, one quick item, I received a, an email from one of our players who was new this year, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, just two sentences, and I won't tell you who this person is. But the, the quote is, "I will tell you, the women of that group, and there are some men too, have been nothing short of a real lifesaver to me. Not only am I learning a sport that is truly engaging and great fun, the people in this group represent the best of humanity. They are kind, supportive, generous, talented, and funny. Impossible to leave a morning session without a few solid, good-natured belly laughs and exciting games on top of that." So, in closing, I would ask you to truly reflect and see if we can find a way to fund the pickleball courts with what we're doing in our organization. We are a small, informal organization, not like a lot of the other sports clubs. We are raising as much money as we can. We have committed to you that we will continue to try to raise money, but we need to move forward in Phase One. So, I thank you for indulging me again, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right. Yeah, Mike?
What design changes did you make?
There were actually a couple of small changes. They, they have what they, and the corners of the courts on the fence line, they have what they call California corners, which are forty-five-degree corners. We squared those, those off to be ninety, because typically California corners interfere with playing in the, in the field of play, and players tend to run into them. So, talk about squaring those off. And then we looked at separating each of the six courts with a small fence in between the courts for safety reasons, because the balls will tend to go into other courts, and the players tend to run into other courts. So, by separating the courts, you keep the players and the balls into the courts that they, they need to be in. And in doing so, we also widened the distance between the courts from eleven feet to fourteen feet. So, two rows that were widened, they would have been widened by three feet times the length of the court. And some, a few gate changes, I think, were in there, but other than that, everything else was top-notch.
All right, anybody else? All right. Mike, thank you. We'll be talking more about this.
Thank you.
Further down agenda, okay? Anybody else here needs to say something, okay? All right, we'll move on then. Five is proclamations and announcements. Five A is the upcoming meetings and events that was in our packet. We can go to six is reports of village officers. Items are for discussion. Possible action. Six A was Martin's administrative, administrator report that was in our packet. If anybody's got any questions for him on any of that. Otherwise, we can go to six B, sale day report for one million six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand water and sewage system. Revenue bond series twenty-twenty-two B from Ellers, and I think Martin is going to cover this one.
Yeah, Brian Raymer from Ellers had an email there in the packet, just giving us the results of the bid sale. It went a little bit better than we anticipated. We got a little bit better in interest rate. And so, as a result, the overall principal interest is a little bit less than their previous estimates.
Okay.
It's good.
It's great. Yeah, good, good interest rates. Anybody have any questions for Martin on this? Okay. All right. If not, we'll go to six C, which is Director of Community Development. Report on status of two forty-nine North Main Street planning process and scope of services with Vanderwall.
He isn't here today, so I'm going to cover this. So, in the packet, Ben Rohr from Vanderwall put together some information about where we're at with this process. If you remember, we approved a scope of services back in June sixth. So, we sent the, set the workshop for July nineteenth in the evening, along with a site walkthrough, and then we're getting ready to do a survey as well. We did get some feedback when we published that, that there may be some interest in either pulling more workshops or changing the workshop, or having the Village Board weigh in on the survey. So, if there is any of that feedback, we'd be, we'd be happy to have it and make any changes now.
Martin, I did ask Elise, is it, and is it possible to videotape the workshop?
Yes, and we will be.
Okay, so then, then that way we can get it out there. A lot of people can see it. That was my comment to Elise. Anybody else? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, the, the survey, the plans to survey a random sampling of the population. I'm not sure that's the best way to go with this. I'm wondering if, if, you know, we could compile the results pretty easily using a, like a Google form that we could have people fill out, and that would avoid the extra thousand dollars that they were talking about for compiling. And that way, it's a, it's a link that you can just send out to everybody. We could put it on water bills. We could put it on whatever, and people just fill it out.
One of the concerns that was addressed to us was the potential for people filling it out over and over and over again in that scenario. And so, one of the ways that was suggested to get around that was to do an actual mailing survey to, to homes, so that we can get actual, a cross-section of that and kind of guarantee that a little bit better.
There is a way to de-dupes Google forms, I mean, to have, to stop people from filling it out over and over again, as long as they're using their actual names. I mean, we can verify names and addresses through water bills and things like that, I would think, but, I don't know. Don't do that. It's the public, whoever's watching. I don't know. It just, I'm looking for ways to, to save money and to survey a, a greater section of Oregon. I don't know.
Phil, comment?
Well, I certainly appreciate your, your interest in saving money. I'm all on board with that, but I'm afraid, as an older adult, I would say that not everybody's going to be comfortable with even finding where you might fill that form out. Not to mention, I think, just, everybody gets mail. I think that's gives us the best chance for a cross-section.
So, I guess I'm wondering, can we do both? Can we, you know, mail to a third of the population then, and also have a Google form available for people who want to fill that out? Other municipalities use Google forms. There, there has to be a way to, you know, to do it. I know McFarland does when they need to know something from citizens. I mean, this isn't like reinventing the wheel. We could probably get some details about how they do it and figure it out.
So, Amanda, one, one criticism I remember from when we did the library workshops that we heard is that people, it wasn't, it wasn't random, that it was just people showing up, and it wasn't sort of representative of the population. I remember that criticism a lot. So, I think that, this is one way, as Martin was saying, how we're going to, of making sure that doesn't happen by doing a random sample.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with the random sample. I'm, I'm saying, in addition, though, we've said all along that if people want to submit feedback, they're welcome to do that. I mean, they can always send an email to us.
Right, and they will, sure, they will, yeah. They already started, have started.
Yeah, so I mean, you're not going to stop those people from, who want to show up and be part of it, from doing that.
Okay. Derek?
So, on the survey, we had, we had to go into a third of the village. What's the cost difference if we sent it to everyone?
Times by.
Three times as much.
That's kind of what I wanted to verify.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mike, go ahead.
Of course, my thing shot off now. I guess I'm okay with sending to a third of the village a random sample. That kind of makes sense to me. I think the Google forms thing is a good idea for the future, but I think we should look at how to design it so that people have unique links and things, because nothing would prevent me from entering my neighbor's name and their address and stuff. I think it would be really hard to figure out, unless we had secret pieces of information that people could pass on. It'd be pretty easy to scam. But we could send individualized links if we set up that infrastructure, and that would prevent people from voting more than once. The, I originally had thought, you know, I really don't like the idea of a Tuesday night meeting, particularly one that starts at four-thirty. You know, it inherently excludes people that work, or at least that work for shift, from getting to it on time. So, I originally was, was kind of thinking we needed a second one. I guess I'm, I'm going to not push that and just say, let's just do it with what we have. Regarding the questionnaire, I would love to see the questions come back. My fear is, is, I mean, there's a lot of ways to word questions. My fear is that we're leading people one way or another with how the questions are formulated themselves, and I'd just like a, an eyeball at them before they go out. I don't want to slant the questions one way or the other, but I do want to level playing field, so that people feel that whatever their position is, you know, they feel it's fair.
And, and I think we can all expect we're, we're going to get lots of emails in our box. Yeah. Yeah, Amanda?
I'd just like to suggest that maybe I can talk to Village of McFarland and see how they use Google forms. It might be possible to not allow for duplicate admissions, you know, that's inherent in it. I, I have to check, though, before we just rag it off and say, "No, that won't work." Let's find out if it would work.
Yep. Yeah.
I would add that that's just, that's just not random, in my opinion. It's, 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 people who are aware of that technology and are aware of the type of notices to get to that type of documentation, that's not random.
Why does it have to be random?
Mailing is strictly, mailing is strictly random, and that's why it's fully supported, the mail only.
Well, the, the Google forms information would be separate from the mailing information anyway, because it's coming in in two different forms. So, you have a random sampling, and then you have all the people who want to comment on it, that are motivated to comment on it in this way.
Right.
So, I mean, we can have both types. It doesn't all just have to be random, because people, it's not random. People, you know, show up here for various events, and they're involved in things, and that's always going to happen.
That sounds like that would add expense, but, but I would not oppose it, as long as the results are kept up.
Okay.
I think it's free, but I'll, I'll look.
And I do, I do like, I think you, hopefully you all agree, videotaping the workshop, so that it can just be, anybody has the opportunity to kind of see and get the information, which I think is a good thing. So, all right. Anybody else? Anything else for Martin?
Let me, I'll check. So, good with the workshop, as is, one workshop.
Yeah.
And then with the survey, we can maybe put a, just a pause on that, and then we can have a conversation about some of these issues, and then make sure that we get the survey draft to you before it goes out.
All right. Perfect, good. Okay. All right, let's go to six D, which is Assistant Director of Public Works. Report, an update on Public Works vehicle purchase plan. There was some information in the packet, and Jeff, I'll, I'll let you direct her, whatever you do.
And Lauren's here too, if we have questions. But basically, just to catch you up to speed, and we had really had some high hopes for a program, a program that would, excuse me, kind of allow us to get into the electric vehicle market, because with that comes a charging station, considerable cost of infrastructure. And that is still a possibility in the future. The, the funding for that has been postponed, if you will. They're hoping to double stack that next year. So, I think we still have an opportunity as we move forward. One of the vehicles that we have been working towards is this Ford Transit van. It's for the water department. We've really gone back and forth. This is more of an emergency vehicle, because it has to be ready to be operated at all times for water main breaks and everything. So, we've kind of gone back and said, now, you know, this is one that we're going to move forward with it as a just regular fuel vehicle. But what we, what, what Lauren and I have been talking about a lot, and Lauren's actually going to attend the Sustainability Committee and just talk, talk about that a little bit, we see a lot of our, I'll call them service vehicles in the future going towards electric. And we're, we're talking about the F-one-fifties. I understand Chevy's coming out with a, a new model as well that's going to be competitive. So, we're really hoping to be able to see kind of some of those park vehicles, some of our staff vehicles, and then other stuff being used for being able to change, change those over to electric. We are always evaluating every purchase and whether or not it makes sense. The technology, quite honestly, some of it is there and some of it isn't. Like on mowers, I think the technology is there for, I'll call it intermittent use, but I don't know if the technology is there for full days mowing use. Like on mowers, I think the technology is there for, I'll call it intermittent use, but I don't know if the technology is there for full days mowing use. In, uh, large vehicles such as plows, um, and that type of thing. The technology is there in other parts of the world, but not necessarily in our part of the world right now. And the, the, the ability of, that becomes another emergency vehicle, like some of, I mean, those are our plow trucks. And we have to be able to have those out. I mean, we have not had a real bad winter since I've been here, but we've had times, I think it was two thousand eight? I think it was. Was that right? Where we had a hundred and ten inches of, of snow by February. And we had trucks that were out for fifteen, sixteen, nineteen hours. And so, the, the point of all this is, we are strongly moving towards wanting to have equipment and vehicles that make sense. That are, that are cost-effective for our village, um, that are environmentally, uh, sustainable and, um, a smart move. But we want to make sure that we're making those decisions as the equipment really makes sense and, and as allows with, you know, the technology that's out there.
And Jeff, I'll just say from my own personal, I, I, I totally get what you're saying. I mean, I have a, the electric trimmer. But when I first got it, the battery didn't last very long, things changed. I'm looking for an electric vehicle, but I, as you, I'm not there yet.
Yeah, yeah.
With, you know, the distance and all that. So, it's, it's.
Right.
I, 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 I'm glad to hear you say that we're open to it and it makes sense, but we just have to, it's got to be correct. It's got to be right for us.
Right, and we have to be able to evaluate the use of it, you know, and, and, you know, the, the city of Madison has done a great job in switching a lot of its vehicles over to, say, CNG. Because they have a huge CNG free source, basically, of, of methane and, and gas off of the, uh, the landfill out there. It's a very ideal situation. I think it's really cool. But, you know, is that something, you know, we need to, we'll continue to evaluate sources like that as well, but we don't really have a great CNG source around other than Dorn Hardware right now. And that doesn't necessarily make sense for, for a large vehicle fueling and that type of thing, so.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah, Amanda?
Well, I was just going to say with the CNG thing, um.
Compressed natural gas, in case anyone.
Yeah. Their, their, where their trucks get it is QuickTrip in Madison. There, that's one of the providers of it. And so I'm thinking we got three in town. If we were ever going to do CNG, that maybe could be a possibility for us.
If they have that ability to have that. And I don't think any of our, our QuickTrips.
Well, not currently, but if they were to be outfitted, if we were to make that transition and partner with them.
Yep.
They, they already have QuickTrips that do it, so they wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. I mean, I was hoping when Joe Parisi first came and talked about that, I was hearing bells in my head going, yes, QuickTrip! Yes, we could do this. So, I don't know, that's something we should be reaching out to Dane County about, or?
Well, I mean, it's, Dane County doesn't control what goes into a QuickTrip or whatever necessarily. Um, but, uh, I think it's something, as we, let's say we had a new application for a, uh, convenience store. Let's say QuickTrip number four. Cause, cause three wasn't enough. You know, we would, we would definitely be talking to them about certain things like that. But they would also need some sort of, I think, reassurance that that's the direction we'd be going. And, you know, I mean, like I said, we're, we're open to it as long as we're not having to drive twelve miles each way just to fill up. You know, because we really cut into, you really, really do cut into your efficiencies and your cost savings when you're, when you're doing that.
Yeah, I mean, is there a QuickTrip right off the pipeline or something? Or is that how they get it, or?
I don't know. You know, the, the thing with Dane County and their, and their compressed natural gas, uh, their, their, their gas that they use. I mean, the, the dump is literally, the pipeline goes right by the dump. And so they actually sell excess gas to the pipeline and then they're able to take it off at other locations. But that's a, a, just a neat thing, but it just happens to be very, very site-specific.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions or comments for Jeff? So hopefully Jeff, we, we get the grant.
Yeah, we're still, I mean, we're still hoping for the grants. You know, the, the grants are still out there. We, we will continue to, um. I think the grant would, and Lauren and I have talked about this, the, the grant is really great in that it would allow us to kind of take off some of that extra implementation cost. That would take the sting away from kind of have to pay double, if you will, for one vehicle. And if we can get that in place, um, you know, the, the cost, the relative cost for the van or for an electric van, um, wasn't that much different than what we just purchased the one for. Um, but it's the eighty to ninety thousand dollars for the charging station that starts to really, when you're paying basically one and, one and a quarter, one and a half X of what the cost of the vehicle is. Starts to, it makes it hard to recoup that.
Okay. All right, Jeff?
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you. All right, six E, Village Department Head, Staff or Consultant Comments. Anybody? Chief, yeah?
I just wanted to talk briefly about Summerfest and how that went. You know, we've, we've had a couple of years off because of COVID. And then in light of all of the national threat issues, um, I had taken all of our old plans and I, I essentially threw them in the garbage. Uh, we started from scratch. I spent about a month working on special operation plans for, uh, providing security for the festival grounds. Which includes Beer Tent and, and then even the general vicinity, as well as the parade. So, uh, what we did is we, we came up with that, this plan. This included staff, communications, uh, all different sorts of components. I won't go into detail because obviously if I talk to you about it, the public sees it and that kind of defeats the purpose. But I, I will say, um, not that we ever want things like Texas to happen, or, uh, Waukesha, or, uh, any of these other ones. That's what we looked at. We looked at those events and how would those plans hold up to those events. And, um, we had a busy weekend. It was very well-attended. Thursday night, you know, it's bingo, so it's not too bad. Friday, uh, we had some problems with some of our, our younger juveniles. I will say the carnival workers were amazing to work with. We had great communication with them and were able to address those issues right away. Cause the last thing we want to see is families leaving the area because they feel unsafe. Saturday night, uh, was a younger crowd in the beer tent and we were happy to help security out with whatever they needed. We did have a rather, uh, violent fight, but we were able to get that sorted out quickly. And, um, you know, that leaned a little bit on our special operations plan, uh, and it worked well. What I will say is, I know this was Ida's first year at the helm and she was a rock star. We worked through some issues quickly and, um, she was amazing. As the Emergency Management Director, I had a lot of things in place, whether it was weather, like I said, threats. Or even just, you know, random issues that may come up that may challenge us. Uh, we will be making adjustments year to year. There's always room for growth, improvement. Uh, so that, those SOPs, we call them special operations plans, will, will grow, get better with time. And we'll be meeting with, uh, the chamber staff to debrief and talk and see how we can support them even more i- if they need it. And, uh, where we can help out. Uh, I do envision though, next year, having some more staff on site. We, I did get a few questions as to Thursday night, there was safety night, so the fire department was out there doing demos and stuff like that. We did not participate whatsoever. Uh, our, our goal was security. And just with the national threats, we did not want to take any chances. So, uh, we just looked a lot different for that weekend. We were, we were around, but people didn't see us at times. And then the SOP for the parade, uh, even, you know, what happened in, um, with the, the rooftop shooter, with the latest incident. We had plans in place for, for that sort of threat. So, uh, we will continue to, uh, evolve as, as things happen. But I, I do often get questions of, do I follow what's happening nationwide and am I looking at this with the school? Absolutely. That is, like, my priority is, you know, the safety. We don't just look at schools. Obviously, schools are a high priority for us, but, um, it's really any vulnerability. So I'm also meeting with daycares, uh, to see what, how we can support them, whether it's training or planning or whatever they need. Uh, but festivals is certainly, and, you know, any large gathering, we, we want to start looking at those things. So, um, I just, again, commend Ida. She was just, her and her staff that worked Summerfest were awesome. Um, and I, the, the event went so well because of how well they, they ran it and how well we worked together. So I just wanted to thank her for that.
All right. Anybody have comments or questions for Chief on that? Yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds good, Chief. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, six F is Village Board Comment. Or, I'm sorry, let me just make sure, anybody, Rachel or, or Jennifer, I just don't want to forget you or jab anybody.
You're going to say something about tomorrow night, right?
I am going to, and you can jump in. Lisa, you have anything? Okay. All right, so Village Board Comments, and, uh, I have two things I just want to jump in first. You all know that, uh, Friday and Saturday was the Obrich Garden Tour. We had seven, seven gardens in the village that came here. They don't, usually it's in Madison, um, and I was one of the gardens. I had twelve hundred people come to my garden. And, uh, so they, they, it was phenomenal. It was good for the village, good for the businesses downtown. Uh, people, I think, ate lunch downtown, had a good time, so. And thanks to all the gardeners, the, the gardens were picked a year in advance. So all of us have been working on our gardens for a year before that even happened. So, kudos to all the, the seven gardeners who participated. The second thing, and Jeff, I'm, I'll let you sort of jump in too. Jeff and, Jeff and I kind of have taken the, the, the helm on, on this. Tomorrow night is the Tin Man Social, Ice Cream Social, and Jeff, take it, go ahead.
Free ice cream.
Free ice cream.
One thing in this world that everyone can agree is a good thing.
So I even ha- I, I even wrote down the flavors. Superman, Cookies and Cream, Chocolate, Black Cherry, Mint Chip. And if there is one of them that, uh, we have to alternate, it's Pirate Bounty and Strawberry. Is, did I get them all, Jeff?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, so, eight o'clock after, um, Quest is the band tomorrow night at seven. They're a good band, and eight o'clock.
Ziggy's bringing food?
Yep, and we'll be ready to scoop. Scoop ice cream, free ice cream, so. That's it for me. Who else? Anybody else got anything? Okay. All right. All right, let's go to seven, Communication and Miscellaneous Business. Items are for discussion and possible action. Uh, seven A is Approval of the Vouchers. If we can get a motion in a second, we'll get it on the table. And then Mike, and then Phil. Any questions? Who's got some? Mike's got some, go ahead.
Uh, just number one zero one seven five, uh, voucher for the bike trail. What was that? Twenty-three thousand dollars in change?
So, yeah, that is, that is the, um, bike path that's in front of the villas of, um, Highlands of Netherwood out there. From Peterson Trail all the way out to the western boundary of the village. That's a, a piece of bike trail that we had installed just in, as part of the connection point. It, it was something that was agreed upon two years ago and, um, they did it last year and they finally got the bill to us for that. It was from Capital Underground, did it as part of the work they were doing on the rest of the Highlands.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I always miss this too. We're, we're approving, uh, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven and twenty-nine cents. Anybody else got anything that they wanted to ask about? All right, seen none. Candy, voice vote, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Glush?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
And Beal.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, we're on to seven B, ACH, uh, Origination Agreement with One Community Bank. Uh, Staff Recommendation is to Approve as Presented. I don't know. Lisa, or Martin, one, one of you two just want to, you want to say anything about that? It was, stuff was in our packet.
Right. I, I'm in, I'm not in banking for a reason. I read through this.
All right.
And if you're all as confused as me, then we all agree that it's confusing.
All right.
It's just, it's our annual agreement that we, we do ACH for, um, water utility bills, we ACH for payroll. Um, there's a number of things that we use it for.
Okay, yeah. Martin, is that good? Okay.
Um, do you like compare it to last year? I mean, there's anything that changed from what we had before?
I, I didn't do a comparison side by side. It took me like hours to just try and read through what I had.
Yeah, same. I mean, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me, but, yeah, I'm not a, I'm not a professional, but it, I mean, it looked okay. It looked pretty standard.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Otherwise we'll take a motion in a second to approve this. Derek, first. Amanda, okay. Any other questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. We're on to seven C, which is Amendment to Dane County Urban County Cooperation Agreement with Dane County for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. Recommendation is to Approve as Presented. That was also in our packet. Martin, do we, self-explanatory?
Yeah, we're, we're part of this consortium that the county, county does for some of the, um, CDBG and home funds that come from the federal government. Um, and by participating, we, um, are able to, um, get this fund at, at an accelerated process than if we did it on our own.
Okay. I also know, I talked to them too, and they're, by, by being part of this, there are some grants, several grants for, um, folks in their home, elderly folks in home. Get repairs and things, so just in, in that, um, that light, I think it's actually a good idea, so. All right, can we get a, anybody want to make a motion in a second? All right, Derek, and then Mike. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Seven D is the Confirmed Hiring of Sam Ross, Summer Parks Limited LTE, and Katie Woodson, Seasonal Parks Limited, uh, Term Employee. Recommendation is to Approve as Presented.
Motion to Approve as Presented.
Thank you. Second from Derek. Any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. We'll go to seven E, Engineering Proposal for Additional Design Construction Services. Totalling twenty-two thousand five hundred for the twenty twenty-three County MM Janesville Street Improvements with Town and Country Engineering. Pretty self-explanatory, Jeff, I think, in our packets. Anybody? If there's no questions, or Mike's got a question, go ahead.
So what's the projected cost for implementing changes to Spring Street and Kirsted?
We don't have those yet, because they have not come up with any conceptual, uh, you know, how far the curb is going to go up on, uh, on either of those. But this is the time to, to make those changes.
Do we, is this all going to come out of the twenty twenty-three borrow in them?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. We need a motion in a second on this one. Amanda and Phil, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. We're on to F, uh, which is Agreement for Reconstruction of County MM Janesville Street and South Perry Parkway Intersection between the Village of Oregon and Dane County. Staff is recommending Approval as Presented. Amanda, first?
First to approve.
Okay, can we get a second? From Derek. Any discussion or questions on this one? Okay, seen none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. G is the Grant Agreement with the State Wisconsin Department of Administration for the Tourism Capital Grant Program in the amount of a hundred thousand for use towards public art. Uh, Staff Recommendation is to Approve. This is, uh, just sort of give you a little background. This is the grant that I wrote that we got for public art. And I've been sort of working through this, talking to communities about how they do this. And one of the community is, is O'Clare. They have this huge, uh, public art. And, and just, I always thought, think, well, we'll just buy the, buy the pieces. Well, what they do is very interesting is they, they have a, this huge pool of artists. And basically the artist gets a stipend of a thousand dollars and they basically kind of loan their art for a year. And then every year, this, everything rotates. And then every year, this, everything rotates. And so it's something I'm talking to them about, because that would be kind of cool to have every year, as much as we can, to have the art change. And they have, they have a huge pool, the artist has to be in the pool. And they're willing to sort of take us in, they would charge us like three thousand, they make a little bit of money, because they kind of run the program. But we have access to all these sort of artists, potentially. The other piece of this that I want to, I think I want, just want to get a nod from everybody is, I want to make sure, there are some artists I know, I want to make sure that we have some local art. For sure, some of our local artists get, that we get some of their pieces. And I've been talking to them about sort of doing the same, same thing for a thousand dollars, they loan it to us for a year. Because I think that's important for us to have some of our local talent in the village as well. So that's, that's kind of the direction, and, you know, with the kind of money, we could, we can do a couple of years with that. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask about that, because I was aware that they lease most of their art, and then the really popular pieces, residents vote on which ones they really like, and those end up being purchased.
Yeah.
Do you, the way that, I was looking at how you had written the grant proposal, does that allow the flexibility for us to lease them?
Yes.
Or do they have to be purchased?
So if we, if we partner with Eau Claire, they, they'll help us get the art.
Well, I realize, yeah.
Charges three thousand dollars, so every, we can pick from the artists that they have.
Yeah, and I realize that.
Yeah.
Ray had talked to them about that same thing. The, but what I'm asking is the way that you had written the grant proposal, does that allow the flexibility for leasing?
Yeah, in, in, it, it, there's no requirement how we do it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so it was an education for me too, a lot of communities do it that way, and I think it's actually, if artists, which I'm really kind of surprised artists just, yeah, we'll let, we'll loan you a piece for a year. I just thought that there wouldn't be many artists that would want to do that. Because think of it, if we had to buy it, we probably could buy four pieces, that would be it, then the grant would be gone. So this is, I'm talking with them, I'm gonna go up to Eau Claire, they're gonna come here, and the, the piece that I'm, I'm really sort of trying to figure out is how, how we get the public involved. Because there, we could, we could have five pieces, and then I want to make sure that we get them out to the public, and or we have ten pieces, and we need to pick five, what do people like? You know, so it's not just, it's not just a small group of people deciding what art is gonna go in the village. I just want to make, and that was part of the grant too, is to make sure that there is a big part, public participation piece.
Yeah, one of the things that Eau Claire does is their, their actual jury committee is not just made up of artists. They invite people in from businesses, and recognizing that art is for everybody, it's not just an artist to Michael, oh, that's a great piece, but.
So, so what they do is they send out a call in August. So they have this huge list and see if artists who want to participate in the program. Now, I know that there are a couple that I've talked to locally that do not want to be in the pool. And we'll just sort of work with them individually, because I, I really do want, I want that local art. I don't want us to have to pick five pieces from there, and none of it's local. I, I don't think we want that. So.
One last comment is, one of the things beyond G, it's a great local piece of art, is we really need to be aware of its safety and kids climbing on it, and the fact it has to be resilient outside, and all of that.
So, so Mike, what Eau Claire does, we would do the same thing, is we would have this, a steering committee of some artists, and it could be, it could be some, also some public, but the thing that artists know, they, they, what is the materials? Are they gonna hold up? Artists tend to know that. Are they gonna hold up to our winter? Are they gonna be safe? Kids are gonna be climbing on things. You don't want to be picking something that's got a lot of sharp edges, that somebody's gonna get hurt. So that, after we sort of, you know, sort of windle it down, that group will sort of look at those things, because you're absolutely right. The maintenance of it, is there gonna be a lot of maintenance, and maybe if there is, you wouldn't pick that. And, because kids are gonna climb on stuff. So, sort of trying to take all that into account. Yeah. So we just need to, we need to sign the agreement, is what we're up, but Amanda?
Yeah, I was also wondering, you know, are there any limitations or like on? I mean, we have free rein basically when it comes to size and location.
Yeah.
And, you know, there don't seem to be many limits on it.
No.
At all. It's just.
No, you're right.
Throughout Oregon is all.
So, so the other thing, in addition to the art, I'm, I'm trying to sort of get a handle on, we may just go out to the public locations, get suggestions from people too, because that, it's a public thing for the village, and residents should have some, some say. You know, maybe I'd like to see one at Lerner Park, or at the library. We want to make sure, we want to make sure it's, the public gets to participate in all levels of it. So it's not just a core group just saying, well, I think we're gonna pick those seven. No, we really want the public, our citizens. And I understand, you know, we all know art is subjective, not everybody's gonna like everything, but I think as long as we're open it up and let people tell us what they think, that's important. Okay?
And getting into the pool of artists is, anybody could apply to do that?
Anybody can apply, it's like, they, they do this huge call, they'll send us the link, we will, we'll have the, we'll get it to the fourteen, you know, the fourteen south artists. Anybody who wants to participate can get into that pool. But then, as I said earlier, there are some people who, like I know, I talked to somebody in, in, she, she would just like to work with us. But is willing to do the same kind of thousand dollar stipend and loan us a piece. Because I, I really do believe that that, I want that local piece, some of that local stuff too. And, you know, with the seven hundred, I don't know if we would get local. But, so I want to make sure we do as part of it too, so. So, I think we, we need a motion, so we can, so Martin can sign the grant, and we can get it, and we can start getting some funds. And so, let me just sort of tell you, most of it, about eighty thousand of it is for the pieces. There's also in the budget, I have some, because we're gonna need some help with public works, you know, what installing pieces. There may have to be a base port or something, so there's money for that as well. We have to have insurance, there's a little bit in there for a map, things like that, but, but the majority of it will go for the pieces. Yeah.
Maybe we can ask businesses to sponsor bases.
That's actually what a lot of people doing, so we could do that as well, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, Phil?
Move as presented.
Pardon?
Move to approve as presented.
Okay, all right. All right, Mike? Phil and Mike, any other? So it's exciting, so I, I think we'll sort of probably see our first pieces being installed probably in spring now. But it's exciting for us, I think, so. All right, so we got a motion in a second, any other discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Sorry, I kind of rambled on it, but I just wanted to make sure you kind of understood what was, what was happening there. H is Revisions to Police Department Use of Force Policy. Staff recommendation is to approve as presented. Chief, you wanna?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, sorry, we're on a bit of a tight timeline with this, so accreditation, our assessment's coming up. It's the full accreditation assessment where they go over twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. And obviously, the use of force is certainly in there, there's certain standards we have to meet. There also have been some law changes, and I, I needed to make sure. We, we had all of that vetted through our current policy, some of those changes were made, but I cleaned up some of the language, some of it. We got some direction from Wiley, which is the Wisconsin. I'm gonna get this wrong. Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group. So, and I know some of you have seen this policy several times now already, so to just simplify it, and I know these policies can already be a little difficult to follow at times. What I did is I just highlighted every change in the memo, so you could see, where you see red, there's a change. The only area that I was unable to put in red was the very last form at the bottom of the policy, which is an annex, it just wouldn't let me change it to red, so I added canine apprehension. I certainly would be happy to go through all of the memo, but I guess, respective of your guys' time, if you want to just take questions.
We had it in the packet and read through it, sure. Do you want to, want to take questions, Chief?
Sure.
Yep. Questions or comments, anybody? Yeah, Mike and?
Yeah, I've got a few. On page one twenty, the last paragraph, just a comment, it's, it's a little hard, I thought, to understand. You have mismatched parentheses and things, you might want to just look at the wording of that a little bit. But the wording implies, and I, and I don't think this is your policy, but it implies that certain types of force goes through a, or use of force gets reviewed by, by a force review team explicitly directed by you. Or, or, or I guess you can explicitly direct that certain uses of force get, get reviewed. There's a whole variety of things that aren't mentioned here in terms of use of force with batons, empty hand, electric control devices that don't appear in, by the wording of this, to get automatically reviewed. I'm assuming there's a review process, and, and you seem to allude to it further on, or, could you describe that a bit better?
The paragraph you're specifically looking at offers the opportunity for me as police chief to take one incident where force was used and say, you know what, I'm gonna send this off to this team of people, and they're gonna evaluate it and give me their report back. There is a whole other process for taser, baton, and that's highlighted in the same policy, it's just in a different area.
Yeah, and I seem to read that, so all uses of force, even a police officer shoving someone, not to say, I'm not accusing anyone of doing it.
No.
But that would be reviewed.
Yes, so that, that specific paragraph is for a use of force review team. Now, that is its own.
Entity.
Entity, and I can choose to use that. But no matter what, every single use of force that is done, a form is filled out, that's that annex that I was referring to. That is reviewed by the direct supervisor, so the direct supervisor reviews all the reports related to the incident and all video to ensure that it was in with pot, within policy. If there was anything that could have been done differently, even if it wasn't a violation of policy, but the supervisor's like, you know what, this could have been done differently. We go back and we will talk with that officer and help them grow and make better decisions, or maybe it's a communication issue, and help them improve. Even after that direct supervisor reviews it, it goes to the lieutenant, and the lieutenant will review it. And they'll do the exact same thing all over again. Both of them have to sign off on that form before that piece of force is filed away. Now, any part of that ends up, whether it's the direct supervisor or the lieutenant or both, if they see something that just doesn't seem right, right away I'm notified, and then we move forward with what we're gonna do.
Okay.
And just to add, Mike, that doesn't, it doesn't differ whether it's a hands-on or if it's a taser, all of them are. So anything where our officers are putting hands on someone and using force, all of that is looked at. So it's not just taser, it's not just a firearm, it's all of it.
Okay. Page one twenty-four, you remove paragraph three. The replacement wording you put in place on seven is, is a little less definitive, probably by intention. So, in particular, paragraph three, you make a reference to, you know, force against a non-resistant, non-resisting individual. Or someone doing passive resistance is not acceptable and would not be done. I seem to see that throughout this, however, I do see use of pressure points and compliance holds as authorized against passive resistance. Can you speak to that a bit? Is, is, do people get injured from that? I mean, under what circumstances would force be used against someone who's passively resisting?
Yeah, so I guess first to address paragraph three, and I'll just read it out loud here. Officers shall not continue to use force except mere physical restraint after an individual has ceased to resist or has discontinued attempting to escape or elude apprehension. Display of only passive resistance by the person warrants only his bodily removal and transport from the scene of the incident. To me, that's not clear enough. It's just, it, it's to run on, it's, all of this ors and ands, basically, it's just simple. They, they should stop using force when it's no longer needed, period. So that's why it states it below. It's, it's exactly the same paragraph, it's just taking all that confusion out. I have to make these policies as clear and straightforward as possible, because especially when it comes to use of force, this is split-second decisions. And I can't have them sitting here thinking, what in the world does paragraph three even say? When it's just simply, you stop using force when it's no longer needed. When is it no longer needed? And you'll see down in that other paragraph, it talks about it. It's, you know, when they're no longer fighting with you. And I'm sorry, what was your, your other question?
Under what circumstances are use of pressure points and compliance holds authorized against someone who's using passive resistance?
Yes, and that is in our policy.
Is this like they wrap themselves around a radiator and you can't get them off? Or is it someone sitting because they have a protest on a step, and, and, you know, they could be just picked up and lifted and hauled away? Without, I mean, how do you divide between where force is actually used or not?
Right.
In that scenario?
Yeah, and we, we only want to use force when we have to. You know, so obviously, communication, if we, if there is time, and we can safely do so, we're communicating to people. But I'll give you a scenario where it's very common, we have to use force. Domestic dispute, we're there, clearly an arrest has to be made. The person refuses to place their hands behind their back, they put them in their pockets, or they walk away and they put them like this. We have to place that person under custody, we're mandated by state law to arrest them. If we have to, we will physically put their hands behind their backs. That could be taken by the wrist, putting it behind their back, that's forced, no, you are forcing their hand behind their back. So that is what, what we typically see when we're talking about a wrist restraint and then it being pulled behind their back. Now, there are other people, they turn around, give us a fighting stance, that is certainly more passive. And that is where we're gonna either, A, obviously, we start with communicating if we can, but then it's, we have to go hands-on. Now, if it's safer for us to tell them, look, if you don't comply, we're gonna tase you, and if it's, we have to tase them. Because if they're being that passive, that may have to happen. But again, all of that, we start with communication, if we can get compliance that way, that's where we're gonna try to find it. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah.
As far as, you brought up pressure points?
Well, just because I noticed that both pressure points and compliance holds were specifically authorized against passive resistance.
Yes, you know, and that, that could be, you know, I've been on a, let me give you an example, I've been on a call where I showed up, and the bad guy was on the officer, hands on around the neck, and he's trying to kill the officer. I jumped on, and it's really hard to get somebody and get your arms around them and try to pull them off. So I used a pressure point. And it helped, because it at least alerted this guy enough that, wait a sec, there's somebody else here. And he backed off a little bit, and it was enough for me to get him off, had to get that officer some aid. And I could have tased him, but then that moment, I decided I'm gonna try a pressure point, and it worked. Am I a big fan of pressure points? No, I don't think they work that well, but in that moment, based off the training I had, that was the tool I used. And that was for an agency, we didn't have tasers.
Right, but I would say that that's also not passive resistance on their part, if they've.
That's, that is passive resistance.
Really? When you've got your hands around the throat of an officer, it's passive?
Yeah, yeah, active, passive, that's, that's, anything to try to help that officer, you're trying what you can.
Oh, you see, I come out of the community organizing, labor, peace movement, where passive resistance is, you know, you lay on the sidewalk and let them haul you away, so.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a difference of terminology.
And I apologize, and our policy passive resistance is non-compliant, non-threatening.
Okay. Lastly, page one forty, section G one A references above section C. Investigative officer involved shootings, I don't see any section related to that, so.
Because it's got its own policy.
Okay.
For the entire thing, yes, and you can find our website. I do not have it with me, but yes, we have a whole policy for that, which also meets Wisconsin State statute requirements, federal law, and our Wiley standards.
Okay, thank you.
Derek, you ready?
Uh, yeah, as far as the NXA, um, when you guys are investigating, but just looking at these use-force incidents, does, does the police commission have access to those reports when they're done?
They could, if they wanted to.
That's not something we just automatically give to them?
I give them whatever they ask for.
Okay.
Yeah.
How often does this policy get updated?
Way too many times this year, I'll be honest with you. I think, uh, the last board, I think you guys, what, Amanda, did you see it, like, four or five? Yeah, three or four times?
At least three, probably more, yeah.
Yeah, um, and we're constantly looking at it, yeah.
I understand.
But, uh, per our WILIG accreditation standards, this has to be reviewed by our staff once a year. Including me, I have to review it as well.
That's fantastic. Oh, I guess in future, going forward, I'd like to see this possibly workshop with the DEI committee? Just to see, I mean, obviously, I want you to stay within your accreditation, what, what's needed for that, but I'd like to see them maybe brought into the conversation as far as how this is worded. On the annex as well, there's a lot of information that gets kind of documented here. As far as the, it doesn't say anything about the body cameras and whether or not the incident was recorded. I'm assuming they, I mean, the body cameras are always on, correct?
Yep.
So...
And if it's not, we want an explanation as to that.
And I know you have that, uh, a policy specifically for that, but can you just run me through what happens to that data, how long you hold on to it for use-force cases?
Yep, uh, it, there's a retention schedule set up. I, i, if we wanted to relook at that, we would have to look at what that cost would be. But typically, for, obviously, for any type of officer-involved shooting, that's going to be turned over to DCI or whatever agency investigating it, and they'll, though, that'll be adopted under their retention policy. But as far as ours, it just depends on the type of incident. If it's a trespassing incident with a use of force, I believe it's a year. If it's a sexual assault case, um, I believe it's seven years. It's either seven or twelve, but there's a whole schedule set up for, for retention on these.
Just like you're asking, is there any time in the last few years where the cameras just malfunctioned and you haven't been able to store data on use-force?
Uh, there's been times where, uh, the wire comes untouched, I mean, this is a force, so these things go flying, so do the radios. But what we do is that, that's where that, that supervisor review and the lieutenant review is critical, because that happens fast. And if there's no video, that's the first question the sergeant's going to ask, and it's the first set of question my lieutenant's going to ask, and I get, I get told about those. If there, there could be a very good explanation, and it very likely may be, you're fighting, this thing goes flying off and comes unplugged. It is what it is. What I will say, and we got this through a donation from a community member that's really helped with this is, and I, I've told you, the board this before, now more than ever ambushes to a law enforcement or people attacking law enforcement while we're not even on calls, it's happening. What's nice is we now have a device on our holsters that activates this camera as well. So what it takes for me right now to activate this is, the device has to be on and I have to tap it. Well, if a threat's coming at me, the last thing I'm thinking about is tapping my camera. So what's nice about that is if, yeah, if this gun comes out of its holster, it, it's going to activate, and that helps.
Do you think, uh, putting whether or not the camera was on or if there's issues on the annex? Just so, just a little box to check, yes, it was on, if no, what the reason was?
Uh, we could, um, but I, I will tell you, no matter what, we already are looking at that, because that's, that's a policy.
I like having things written though.
Yep, yeah, we could, we could throw it on there.
I think that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, looks like we're looking for a motion, a second, to approve the revisions to the force policy. Amanda and Mike, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Aye, village president nomination of John Bonsonveal to fill the, uh, unexpired library board term ending twenty twenty-four, vacated by Kyle Severson, to be effective immediately. And nomination of Laura Reese to fill the unexpired library board term ending twenty twenty-five, vacated by, by Carrie Shuda, to be effective September one. So we're, we're doing two of them tonight, we had a good pool. I had Jennifer looked at the, the candidates, and so did Martin, and these were the two, both John, John Bonsonveal and Laura Reese. We, we were unanimous in selecting these two to fill the two vacancies. So we're looking for a motion to confirm that. One, I got first from Amanda, anybody want a second from Derek? Any questions? Yeah, Derek.
Jennifer, just like you're asking, how long was Kyle and, or do you know the duration of Kyle and Carrie's tenure on the board?
Um, Kyle served for approximately five years, Carrie, uh, served since two thousand and seven, so it was about fifteen years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, we got a motion, a second, to confirm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Eight, report of committees, none. Nine is unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. Nine A is the member, the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the village of Oregon, village board and the library board relating to the construction of a new municipal library, providing for additional six hundred thousand in borrowing for geothermal and solar, um, systems. And so do we, Martin, you want a motion on that, yes? Yeah, okay. Anybody want to make a motion, a second, we're just updating the memorandum? Yep, Amanda and Mike, anybody have any questions for anybody on this? Pretty straightforward. Okay, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, Derek's a no, okay? And are you a no?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, question regarding when two people are missing, does, is it a majority of the people present? Or is it a majority of seven?
No, this is, we have a quorum.
So it's a majority of the quorum? Okay.
Okay.
So I have three, two, right?
Yes.
So the motion does...
It, it passes.
Yes.
Yep. All right, we'll go to B then. Initial review of draft, uh, chapter, chapter one of village code and continuing discussion on chapter two, village code and village board handbook. Martin, anything, it was all in our packet?
Yeah, so we've been talking about this for a little while now, and, um, we covered chapter two in the handbook in the last two meetings. I think chapter two is getting pretty close to its final form. Uh, we still have some work to do on the handbook to bring that all together. But the big piece for this evening's meeting is, this is the first time you'll see chapter one, the first draft of that. Compared to chapter two, this one is a little bit of a monster. It's been a long time since this thing's been updated. So it, overall, I think the structure is still there relatively the same as far as covering, uh, officers and covering village boards and commissions and a couple other general government items. I think the biggest thing that I'm suggesting in the draft is to do a pretty significant overhaul of the village officer system. My suggestion is to only have officers that are statutorily required or have recently been discussed and decided by the village board, or are desired by the board, like the vice president position. And I outlined in my memo some of the reasons for that. You can be an officer and an employee, but you can also just be an employee. And when you designate someone as an officer, it kind of starts to complicate whether or not they're an at-will employee. So my suggestion is just to keep that to the, to the minimum. Otherwise, it creates a whole, the potential to create a whole maze of, of complicating issues. Beyond that, um, a couple of minor things. For example, we talked about the code of ethics, and moved that from chapter two to chapter one. Um, we cleaned up some of the boards and commission language, especially for the statutory bodies. And then I also have a couple of, uh, items in there as far as moving some of the language to different parts of the village code, uh, as far as like the cemetery, some public records stuff. And then we also know that we have to clean up a couple charter ordinances. There's still a charter ordinance on the books that says our village attorney is elected. We also have one that says that the village treasurer and village clerk are the same position. So we just need to, to unwind and clear some of those things out. Uh, if there's any comments, questions, be happy to field them.
Yeah, Amanda.
So we're going to issue new ordinances to repeal the, like, the, or replace?
Yeah, so in order to repeal a charter ordinance, we have to do a, a charter ordinance to do that. So that's a little bit of a process. But we'll, we can do one single charter ordinance to clean all of that up. So we'll draft that up and we'll get that in front of you guys to take a look at.
Okay.
Other things for Martin? Good, Mike, you got some?
Yeah.
Do you have some?
No, please go ahead.
Um, section one oh one two, one dot zero one two. That just applies to elected officials and officers, it wouldn't apply to committees, right? The, the five days to your oath.
What page? Right, yep.
Page one sixty-three, excuse me. Okay, page one sixty-six, one zero, one point zero three, uh, one A. I personally would like to remove point one. I think that appointment by the village president should only be done with approval by the board.
I'm sorry, which section is that, Mike?
Section one dot zero three, subsection one, subsec, sub subsection A, sub-sub-sub point one. Or section one.
That was clear, Mike, yeah.
So it says, method of selecting appointed village officers, and then underneath is appointment by the village president.
Yep.
And underneath that is appointment by the village president, subject to confirmation by the village board.
And so you're suggesting...
Deletion of step one, point one.
So you can delete it, but it will still apply to you, because it's in the statutes. So this is just referencing that that exists as an option for the board. The board can create its own rule to not do that, but a future village board could obviously come through and...
Yeah, I'm just dealing with our village board at the moment.
But don't we use three? It's appointment by the village board, we choose our officers.
We typically do two.
I'm, I'm, maybe I'm confused about what officers we're talking about. Like, are we talking like vice president and, you know, like those types of officers? Because we did that as a board, didn't we?
Yeah, we did that between us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The board, that's number three, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, you're correct, I think.
Yes.
I get this, I keep going back and forth.
Yeah.
And so that's by the village board. So we use number three, but you're saying by statute, we have to use one of those three.
Yeah, so in statute, the, the village board is empowered to make appointments by these three methods. And throughout the ordinances that we have, there are certain positions that we do just appointment by the village board, which I think is the vice president. We, it's a collective decision. Most of our appointments are village president, subject confirmation of the village board. And there's also the option of straight appointment by the village president, which I think we only do for village board standing committees.
Correct. So, uh, just throwing that out there, we can decide it later, I guess. Uh, section, page one seventy-one, section one dot zero sex, six, excuse me, subsection two, has a compensation for the board of review, uh, where we get paid, which surprises me since I've been on it now two years and never saw any pay for it.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd suggest we strike it.
I don't think we, I don't think we can, because that's also in statute as well. And I actually noticed that when I was going through the board, the, 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 um, the code, and...
The checks in the mail?
Yeah.
The checks in the mail.
There. All right.
So, yeah, we're going to, you know, make sure that that's followed, no?
Okay.
But it says fifty dollars for the first full day, and we only did two hours.
Well, that's a full day. Because, you know, some, some boards maybe schedule appointments at their first board of review meeting for other days, so that's where that language is coming from.
Okay.
You sure it was only two hours? Man, it seemed like all day.
Seemed forever, didn't it?
So you guys will be rich now.
All right.
Awesome. Page one seventy-three, one, section one point zero nine, subsection three, references a quorum of three for the village board, isn't that four?
What's the library board, I think?
It's the library board.
Was it library board?
Yes. Yeah, that's under the library board section.
Is that still right, though, Jennifer?
I believe Martin just took that from state statute, Martin, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's word for word, so, um, the statute says that a majority of membership of the library board constitutes quorum, but in the statute, the library board actually can by its own regulation provide that three or more of its members constitute quorum.
And the library board bylaws currently do not do that, but it's just statutor, statutorily allowed.
Okay, um... Page one seventy-eight, section one point one seven, subsection two, mentions five, two chefs of five total election inspectors, is that five in total? Is that five per polling place?
I actually had that noted to speak with Martin about, because that's just language in the statute as well. But we have to use an odd number of election workers, so it could be five, it could be seven. So I'm going to work with Martin to clean that up just a little bit.
Can you use an even number of odd election workers? Never mind.
Well, that gets very, very confusing, so...
Lastly, page one seventy-nine, section one dot two zero, mentions that the village pays the salary of the municipal court judge. I'm assuming the town contributes money to that, is that correct or incorrect?
No, they do not.
Really?
They only contribute when they have a case before the court.
And they haven't for a long time.
Seven years.
Wow. Very law, law-abiding citizens out there.
Well, we don't have any, uh, no, we have no police coverage, except for the sheriff. We don't have any contracted coverage.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you.
All right, that's it for you. Okay, anybody else? All right, so Martin, you got what you need, come back?
Yeah, so the plan remains, we'll, uh, cover this at a couple more meetings, but I think, I think we're getting pretty close, so I'm hopeful either in August or September, we'll wrap this up and we'll, we got the other things that we need to draft up with charter ordinance and then a couple of the, uh, ordinance language, moving some of those other pieces around, so we'll take care of that as well.
Okay. All right, let's go to nine C, we're getting there. Setting comparable community pool for the purposes of employee compensation study. Martin, you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, so if you remember when, um, Patrick Glenn from Carlson Detman, um, came before the board and presented on the compensation study that we're doing, one of the policy points that, uh, we need to decide on is to set a comparable pool for the analysis. They, uh, Carlson Detman had a recommended pool that they provided us. I shared that with the department heads, we got, had, shared some feedback back with, with Carlson Detman, and we settled on the group that you see in the memo there. Obviously, a heavy emphasis on Dane County communities because of the similarities that they're all facing, uh, as we are. We also talked about, uh, the inclusion of, of Madison and Janesville as, uh, communities that, um, may not be, may not compare for certain positions, but may compare better for maybe blue collar or administrative staff positions who do similar work. And so we wanted to make sure that we captured that as well. And so that's the pool that we're, we're recommending.
Yeah, Phil?
Move to approve the comparable pool as presented.
Okay, second? All right, Derek, I saw Derek's again, any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, you got your pool, Martin? Alright, 10, as new business items are for discussion, possible action. 10A is consider, consider a village's future observ, observation of Juneteenth holiday. I think that was, this was Carleen brought this up last time, and I, I, she's not here. I don't know what Carleen was thinking. Was she thinking that we shouldn't have been meeting? Village board shouldn't have been meeting on that day?
You could also ta, you could also table it.
Alright, can we ta, so, so we get that from her? Yeah, second? Alright, Derek. Yeah, let's, let's, once she gets back, we'll figure out what she was thinking. Alright, we got a motion, a second. On the table, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? 10B, review draft 2023 through 2032 capital improvement plan worksheets.
Can I, before we move on, when we table, we have to table to a date, don't we?
Yeah.
Does that just go to the next meeting?
Well, I was staying next meeting.
Okay, just making sure it works.
Yeah, I, I think she'll be back. I think she'll be back next week.
She, I think she's, yeah.
Alright, so the next meeting.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Randy?
Yeah.
We have a bunch of people out here that have sat through a lot.
You wanna go to C?
Could we by any chance, yeah, change the order of this, so we can talk about, uh?
Okay, yeah, we, are you guys okay with that, everybody?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's go to 10C then. Consider, consider using surplus unassigned general fund balance totaling $334,600, or funding sources to fund community group request for pickleball courts in J.C. Park, Phase 1, the Splash Pad project, and/or other ideas. So, alright, Derek, start us off.
My first question is for Jeff. If we rebid the pickleball or send it back, what kind of, uh, what kind of bid do you see us getting back on that now?
Yeah, so, I mean, the process, obviously, we'd have to go back to the contractor. I'm meeting with them tomorrow, a regular meeting. And, and I would, um, let, you know, if there's a decision made, I would put that in process. They would have to come back with a change order amount. The original amount was 178, that, 178,458 and change. I would predict, and this is just a guess, I mean, you know, so I have to be really careful about this, but I would predict somewhere between 10 to 20 percent change would be my guess, but that's just a guess. There's nothing founded on that. I've done no discussion with the contractor over that. But, um, and that would be for what was in the original bid, which were 6 pickleball courts. I don't know if, like, some of the changes, I know we talked with Mike and, and our architect or engineer. I don't think some of the changes are big. You know, there is some increase in the size. And the fencing definitely would, would impact some things, but, um, and this is for 6 courts non-lit. Because there's, these are not lit courts, uh, because that was not part of, that was part of the electrical, and that was a pretty high price in there, about 90, $92,000.
Okay.
So when you say the change, what was it? What was the original bid when we first?
The original, the alternate price for that was 178,458 dollars and 3 cents.
And you think that, you're guessing that it could be an increase of 10 to 20 percent from that?
Correct, correct. I mean, if they were 20 percent, it would be right around 214,000 and change. But it could be, you know, this is, this is the difficulty, that's why we put alternates in bids, because, you know, we don't like to be going back where if they feel like they left money on the table, they try to recoup it on certain things. But, you know, I mean, we had bids for also, you know, alternates, which included the playground and the adult exercise area, too. So those are areas, the other areas that we also had to, um, keep out of Phase 1 at the time.
Okay. So I saw Mike's hand first, and then went with Phil.
Go with Phil first.
Go ahead, Bill.
So let's just talk about process here a little bit. So I'm assuming what we would do is, is authorize, uh, Jeff to go out and rebid. That would come back to us, then we would make a decision at that point whether to.
Well, it's not a rebid. It would be, we would just be asking for a change order request from the contractor.
Alright, but in any event, we would need to approve whatever that amount is, I'm assuming, unless we gave you a not to exceed number.
If you gave me a not to exceed or something, yes, that would be the other alternative.
Would either, would either of those options change the timeline of doing that, do you think?
Anytime you authorize staff to do something that doesn't have to come back to village board, depending on where it lands and the schedule, is typically a time saver.
Yeah.
So, Mike, Mike was up.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have a piece of Phase 1 that actually isn't proceeding at this point, which is the, the building, because it came in way over.
Correct.
Way over budget.
Correct.
Um, what would be the significance if we pushed the building to Phase 2 and took some of that money and put it to pickleball courts, which we clearly have an active constituency interested in?
Well, I, I mean, I, I would discourage going to not doing the concession stand. The concession stand and bathrooms, family bathrooms, um, I think are a very important part of this park. And, you know, we are already kind of constructing all around it. And, you know, once we go to start using it, I mean, our hope, our goal and our hope is to be able to construct that through this late fall and early spring, before the fields are ever being used on an active basis. Once they become to be used on an active basis, it becomes harder from a construction standpoint, because you have equipment and other things right in the middle of all your ball diamonds there. But that, that'd be my opinion on it. But, I mean, it's, you know the pots of money. You know, uh, it's really up to you where, because one way or another, you either borrow more money, uh, to do projects, or, or we don't do projects. I mean, you could say, we don't want to do a concession building at all. And then we would put porta-potties out there, and I don't think anyone would be liking that either.
So, so to Jeff's point on this, you, we're, we're gonna pay for the, the pickleball one way or another, whether we take it out of this 334,000, or we're gonna borrow it. Because we're committed to, to doing it. Jeff, my question for you is, if, if we agree, would agree, can we, can we do it, still do it in Phase 1?
It really depends on what the contractor says, yeah.
Alright.
I don't, you know, I'll talk to them tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to clarify what you said, Randy, you said talked about borrowing, but I think we were talking about using our money from the fund balance.
Yeah, so I'm, what I'm saying is, if, if, if we, if we don't take it from the fund balance, we're still gonna have to pay for the pickleball courts, and that means we're gonna have, am I, am I correct in that? We're gonna have to borrow the money?
Well, depending on where fundraising is and everything like that, I mean, it, it all comes down to, this is a challenge on any project, is, is you have what you have designed, just as much as the library's learned and we all learn is, you have what's designed, and then you have what's borrowed, and, and then you have the number of what it comes in at. The other thing is, I mean, we do have some cost, uh, changes already on the park. We have approximately $40,000 that we had to haul off all of the concrete rubble that was buried in the park site 45 years ago when they constructed the wastewater treatment plant. So we would like to thank our, our ancestors for that gift that they gave us. And, um, a couple things, uh, some additions to the veterans' flagpole area, and, um, also some possible culvert replacements that we have to do. And, yeah, and some other small costs. So, I mean, we probably are already 40, 67,000, probably 70,000 dollars, you know, into our contingency already.
So I, I just wanna sort of, uh, just thinking about back what Mike was saying, what, my feeling is, I, I know the last time we met with them, we said it's not gonna be done in Phase 1. What I'm impressed with is, they took that to heart and went back out and raised more money. Didn't have to, but they did. And for, for me, that shows me that they were willing to sort of help, at least help make this happen. And that, I, I mean, I like that. I wish, you know, more groups would do that. So I think, um, kudos to them for trying to work with us and raise as much money as they, they, they can toward, toward making this happen. Yeah, Derek?
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to allocate $160,000 from the general fund to include pickleball and back into Phase 1, obviously on the condition that, uh, the pickleball organization commits their additional $32,000, or $32,500 to that, to give us $192,000, or $192,500 for it. Um, if the bid comes in higher than that, then I would say that the village board should probably look at it again.
Okay. Phil?
Like, uh, friendly, uh, amendment of that the funding, the 160, whatever number, is coming from the, uh, general fund balance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, second. Okay, Amanda, other, other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll be talking to the contractor.
Oh, I should've used my gavel. Stop, stop! Alright, alright, thank you.
While we're on this item, though.
Yeah.
Are other motions allowed?
Yes.
I'm, I'm thinking, uh.
It's a discussion, Amanda.
I, I'm, I'm interested in giving some money to the Splash Pad project. I know Jenna has brought that up before with the board. And, uh, I think they're trying really hard to raise money, and I think it's an amenity that would draw people to this community. I see it as a benefit, and it makes Oregon a destination for, for parents with kids, and that helps our village grow. So I would like to suggest that we take, I, I'm gonna just say for now, $10,000 of that money remaining in the, uh.
The fund balance?
Fund allowance, thank you, um, towards this Splash Pad project.
Second?
So that's a motion, okay.
Yep, motion and second by Phil. Any other, any other discussion on this? Mike, you're, oh.
No, that's just a blank stare.
Alright.
And that was 10,000?
$10,000, okay. Alright, see no other discussion. We got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's it? Alright, you, um, should we go back up to the, you wanna go back up to the capital improvements?
Could we, could we take like a 5 minute?
Yeah, let's take a 5 minutes. So, back by 7? Okay.
Let's, let's go to 10B. Let's get, let's go review the draft, 2023 to 2032 capital improvement plan worksheets. We had all of them in our packet, so, Martin, you wanna start us out, or?
Sure. Uh, so, yeah, this is kind of our first part of our annual budget process, is taking a look at, uh, the proposed or draft, uh, capital improvement plan. This is the first year we've done a 10-year plan. Historically, we've done a 5-year plan. My only direction to departments was to put everything that they could think of in there, so that we're not missing anything. There's no surprises. So I think they did a really good job, and I think, um, as we continue doing the 10-year planning horizon, I think we'll, no doubt will be things that we remember and, and wanna add in there and keep populating those future years. But, um, I think this is a really good snapshot of, um, all the projects and equipment replacement that exist out there. I handed out, just before the meeting, this packet of information to all of you. So we did get all of, uh, I handed out, just before the meeting, this packet of information to all of you, um, so we did get all of this information to Ellers to start working on our annual financial management plan update, which will either be presented in August or early September. As you can see, he's, he's already taken the data, and he's, he's broken it out by, um, funding source, um, so you can kinda see it in a different way there. But back towards the end of the packet here, you can see, um, sort of his preliminary financing plan, um, so for example, anticipating a, a geo-bond, a borrowing of eight point five million in twenty twenty-three, and you can see it all the way down the line there. Um, and then on this page, page seven of that packet, you can see, uh, the impact of financing plan as it is posed. So, for example, on that right side there, um, this year in twenty twenty-two, we had a debt service tax rate of a dollar fifty-six per thousand. So, for every thousand dollars of assessed value, you pay one dollar and fifty-six cents towards that, uh, village debt service on property taxes. And so that was this year, uh, five hundred dollars on a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar assessed home. Um, you can see that ramp up, uh, because we have a number of, um, large projects, especially over the next five to seven years. It caps out at three dollars and seventy-five cents, um, so if you're paying five hundred dollars on debt service in the village on a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar home in twenty twenty-two, it's five hundred dollars. By twenty twenty-seven, you'll be close to twelve hundred dollars, um, so tripling, uh, the amount that people will be paying for that. I will say, um, oh, and then on the last page, you can see the impact to our debt capacity. So, the village has a statutory debt limit, um, that's five percent of our equalized value. You can see we're, uh, that twenty twenty-seven year, we're approaching that seventy-seven percent, closing in on that eighty percent. Which, uh, is, is starting to get up there. But I will say, this analysis is pretty conservative, um, so Ellers is using, uh, a two percent year-over-year growth of the village, um, and calculating their impact on the tax levy, we've been growing at seven percent, uh, on average over the last five years. So, as the value of the village increases, the ta, the tax levy gets spread out more, so that impact on a home may, may be less, um, if our growth continues in the way that it has. You know, there's some others, some other things, too, um, you know, for example, we, we still have to spend about half a million dollars in ARPA funds that can be applied to some of these projects, um, so there's some other ways that, you know, we could see that, that number decrease, but of course, you know, we don't know where prices are gonna be at over the next two, three, four, five, six, seven years, so... But I think it does give a pretty good snapshot of, of where we're at, um, so I think for tonight's meeting, we're, we're just wanting some feedback. If there's any questions, um, in the packet, you can see the full schedules, um, combined and then broken out by department, along with worksheets for each item. So, if there's any questions, if there's anything as far as, you know, there's something that's not in there that you wanna see in there, something that you wanna see removed, moved around, reprioritized, um, that's the sort of feedback that we wanna get at this time.
Yeah, Amanda.
Does, does this include that six hundred thousand dollars we approved extra for the library?
It does.
It does, okay. If we need, I mean, that, that's as if we borrowed it.
Yep, it's as if it's...
So, that might help if that grant comes through, then we wouldn't have that.
Yep, then that would be decreased, yep.
Okay.
And Martin, there would, there'll be several opportunities for us to talk about this, Frank.
Yeah, so over the next three meetings, um, we wanna talk about this, and then, like I said, we'll have Dave from Ellers. Uh, if y'all remember, last year he came, I think it was the first meeting in September, he presented the financial management report, um, which fleshed this out in a lot, much greater detail, um, so we're gonna keep working on that, so you'll have the opportunity to, to talk about it over these next three meetings, up to that meeting, and then, once we get to that meeting, we'll wanna get an approval of the CIP, so we can take whatever is in twenty twenty-three and then put that into the annual budget, and then we'll start the annual budget process.
Alright. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, um, I kinda have sticker shock, I mean, seventy-two million dollars of borrowing in five years is, is horrifying.
Um...
Can some of this be feasibly pushed out? I know we have lifetimes for equipment and things, but, you know, sometimes you make 'em limp along. I mean, almost everything of this ten-year plan is front-loaded on, on the front end, um... So, I, I guess one of the steps that I would like to see happen is, is some prioritization of what could conceivably be pushed and stuff, because even the, the, I'm assuming that this chart that Ellers put together, I mean, that just shows the, the village debt. That doesn't show the utility debt and the increase in utility fees, so, I mean, this is gonna be a significant...
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, because that's another point I wanted to make, was this does not show utilities, so the utilities are taken out of this analysis. So, that's another analysis that we'll have moving forward, too.
And that's a big chunk of money, too, because the sewer...
Especially for the sewer plant.
Yeah, the sewer plants in there.
Sewer plant's almost, yeah, twelve million dollars just in.
Now, there's a couple of these things, as I was going through, that, that kinda raised flags for me, and I'll just mention them and as, as thoughts. One, um, candy is the document management program that you're looking at. I don't know if you've gotten a price bid on this, but my, I mean, this is, this is in my wheelhouse of my career. Uh, spending forty thousand dollars for a document management system is, uh, not only on the cheap end, it's probably a tenth of what the cheap end is. So, I mean, four hundred thousand is more, uh, in line with what a document management system costs.
Yeah, when I was, when I was speaking with, um, someone, when I was trying to get some estimated numbers, that was just a starting point of a plugged-in amount.
Okay.
So, yeah, I understand, because there would have to be considerable, but we're also not there yet, so that could also be pushed, pushed out as well, too.
Then, uh, I saw a, a new building planned for the fire department at twelve million, and it's, it doesn't seem like that long ago that that building that we have was added to or built, or I don't know if it was built or expanded.
It was two thousand, the, the, uh, multi-story part was at, was built.
Okay. I mean...
For two million dollars.
Are there ways of, of adding on to that? Are there ways of adding across the street and, you know, having a quick run to the garage across the street? Because twelve million's a lot of money, I mean, that's another, that's more than a library, and, you know, um... Uh, other things that, that popped to mind, uh, there's a million dollars in here potentially for a fiber run from PD to, from the police department to, um, uh, the new village hall. That actually burying dark fiber is something that you see less and less anyone other than a telco doing these days in terms of networking. The normal way that most corporations are doing it now is you run a VPN across your internet connection, it's everybody's secure as fiber. If you need more reliability, you stand up two VPN, or two internet connections, because it, the cost just isn't there for...
We're evaluating that, um, yeah, kinda working with our computer magic to look at that.
Yeah, and Mike, I would recommend maybe you have a conversation with Rudy, because she knows that stuff inside and out, can kinda fill you into, if you're okay with that, Jeff.
Yeah.
Talk to him, talk to fiber, I know she's had a lot of experience with it, with her building.
Um, and I noticed in here, the, the police department has, has money slotted for various building things, which I, you know, boiler systems and things, which I realize you're gonna need, but shouldn't that be centralized through Public Works? I mean, aren't you more familiar with all that, Jeff?
Yes and no, I mean, what we did maybe four years ago, four and a half, maybe five years ago, we, we did start to put directors who are with their facilities, more in touch with the large capital stuff going on at their facilities. So, that was just a operational decision we made.
Okay, does it get run by you at all for opinions?
All the time, yeah.
Okay.
We talk all the time.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Um... Anything else? Will, since we're having a discussion on, on village mowing policy in a couple of weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, would that, uh, change in that policy actually be, be reflected in your equipment needs?
It could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna say, I remember when we were reaching over fifty percent in terms of debt limit. To see, to see seventy-seven point four six, it was like, wow!
Yeah.
Throw money.
Yeah.
I would really, really like to see us try and see if we can push some of this...
That's way too...
Out over a longer horizon.
Amanda, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just also wanted to point out that Oregon has one of the lowest taxes in Dane County. I mean, yeah, taxes are gonna go up because we have these projects, but we are way, way at the bottom when it comes to other cities and villages and towns in Dane County, so, um, you know, this is part of growing pains. And I know it looks scary on paper, for sure, it's a lot at once, and it's unfortunate that we have to build a lot of things kind of close together. I mean, yes, we should definitely try to mitigate it, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm also saying, don't panic. It, it's, it's okay, I mean, you know, Martin said this before, too, like, even though it looks bad, it's, I feel like it's something we can handle right now. We don't want it to, we should just not look at this like, oh my God, we're, we're going into so much debt, bleh! It's, it's part of transitioning to, uh, from a bedroom community to a community where we have destinations, things that people come to Oregon for, like a library, like a J.C. Park, you know, for tournaments, pickleball, whatever. We're, we're investing in the future of Oregon, and that's how we should be looking at this.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, and I, I absolutely concur with you, except for some of our citizens, this will be a panic. I mean, I have, uh, a neighbor that lives, you know, not that far from me, that lives on twelve thousand a year, you know, um... This is a panic thing for them, if they see their taxes going up, so...
And Mike, I would agree, I mean, we, 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 we need to be responsible, that, we need to sort of pay attention to this. I'm glad this is our first look at this, and hopefully we can get this down, because, um, it is really alarming, and that's as high, so... Alright, anything else? So, Martin will see more of this.
I guess, I mean, going off Mike's comment, would you like the staff to go back and kinda do a sharpen the pencil sort of thing, and see what can, kind of float along a little bit farther in our opinions?
I mean, I think, I think at some point, we would like that.
Well, I think it's, pardon me, I'm...
Yeah, that's okay.
From my experience, that's an ongoing thing, you know, it's not like we're gonna do it today, and then, okay, we're set for a couple of years, so... I think we should try and work with the document we have to get something to start with on the twenty twenty-three budgeting. All of these expenses aren't gonna come up next year, and I think it's easier for staff, I think, to, to, correct me if I'm wrong, implement this new ten-year plan and get us on board with it. Uh, so then, when we get to the budgeting in the fall, then we get, then maybe at that time, some could say, okay, wait a minute, we need to, this, pardon me, we need to move this out of twenty twenty-three and get more specific, that's my thoughts.
Yeah. Derek?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, and I agree with Mike's sentiment that some of those stuff needs to get either pushed back or pencil sharpened. There's one project in there that I, I would almost go the other way on, and that's Wolf Street, um, and I'm gonna talk to Jeff a little bit about this. That's in conjunction with the county.
It's a county project, right?
Is that, and I see it in here for twenty twenty-seven, um, just kinda with the, the Lake Stone development being finished, I don't know if you've ever driven down that direction with the middle school gets out.
I live across the street.
Yeah, you get kids just walking all over the place, and it's kind of a dangerous area at that time of the day, I guess. That, that's one where I'd almost like to see it pushed forward, and maybe have some of the other projects pushed back. And I don't know if that's possible through the county.
I didn't talk to Jerry Bolick.
Huh?
Said, talk to Jerry Bolick.
Well, no, the, the county is actually usually looking at us as far as what schedules we would like, and then, and then, I mean, it obviously has to go through their budgeting. I agree, the, the thing with some of the improvements there, the, uh, like the intersection at Pleasant Oak and Wolf Street, um, other things, the sidewalks and stuff, that would be a considerable additional cost for us, and I totally support, I mean, that's been a, there's, that's been a glaring problem for many years, and, um, but, you know, I, I, more than I sit down and look at all the projects, and there are a lot of them. Um, we also discussed, you know, when you get out in year seven, eight, nine, ten, it gets a little light, and that's partly because a lot of these projects can and do get pushed back a year or so here and there. There's a lot of these projects that are grant-driven as well, and if we don't get the grant, you know, it's, um, should we or shouldn't we, you know, continue to do those, or should we go through another grant cycle? But, um, we could look at, you know, how we would have, uh, that, I just wanna be careful, because once you kinda give the county the green light, they, they're anxious to get rid of these roadways, um, but like that intersection at Pleasant Oak would likely be a, a roundabout, and that's a million dollars that they probably wouldn't fund, um, and so, you know, we'd be carrying the lion's share of, of that, so...
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I wanted to address what Michael said, too, about, um, people who are on fixed incomes, trying to stay in their homes. I mean, we've talked about housing issues for seniors in general, but, um, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can set up a fund to help seniors pay their property taxes, something where there, you know, people could come in and pay extra property tax, like, or round up, or do something like that, some kind of a program where that would help people who are unable to pay, uh, property taxes. I mean, that is a real issue, and I'm not ignoring that when I'm saying, don't panic, I mean, I get that for some people it is, but, um, you know, there, we, we kinda sit around bringing our hands, like, well, how do we fix this? We don't know, we just have to keep going on, and, and, I mean, I want us to look into some way to, to do that. I'm happy to, you know, I don't know, I don't know what it would look like, I'm just saying we should, we gotta...
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, there are programs out there that, that exist that, that provide that, sometimes just to specific populations, like veterans and things like that, um, so there are things out there, it's just a matter of being able to find them. You know, partly for us is, you know, with those types of programs, it becomes a management thing, where now we have to dedicate resources to the policy. You know, we have to develop a policy, we have to develop a program, we have to have staff that manage the program, that sort of thing. So, now you're spending more money just setting up the program than you would be maybe even spending doing the program. So, that's just, you know, something to think about, but certainly an option.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, when, uh, was researching this with, with village staff and the senior center regarding this, there's really nothing that helps people with property taxes. You can get, you can get money for help with fixing up your house, you can get money for fixing, you know, uh, if you're delinquent on, on utilities, you can get help, but you need help for your property taxes, eh, there's nothing.
Okay, so Martin, what are you, what are you, uh, next step, what are you hearing? I, I will just say that I would never support a seventy-seven percent debt limit, um, so...
No, I think the benefit of, of doing this planning process with ten years is, you know, it gets us thinking about it now.
At least the, the benefit package is what, a third of salary as well? Is that about right or?
What do you got this in here, twenty-six? Well, depending on if they take, the biggest part of the benefit package obviously is the health insurance. So it depends on if the person that's hired is going to take single or family health insurance. Right there, you're talking about, you know, fourteen thousand dollar difference in the benefit package with that. Then you have six point five percent of the income towards retirement. And then there's the VICA taxes, seven point six five. So those are the three items that go on top of the actual cost of the salary.
But it would be potentially another twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars per person.
Mm-hmm, yes, correct.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? So we're going to motion in a second to approve? All right, see no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
Thank you. And we will be bringing back any kind of, we'll, we'll be going through an interview pro, or advertisement process, interview process. And any kind of hire obviously would be brought back to the village board for final approval.
One thing I want to mention too with this is, since it is a utility position, it's covered by user fees and that sort of thing. So we're able to be a little bit more flexible in bringing on a staff person because of how it's funded. Whereas with like a general fund position, it'd be just much, much harder because we're so restricted with property tax.
Yeah. Okay. All right, let's go to, we're almost done. Let's go to E, future agenda items. This item gives board members opportunity to place items and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anybody have anything? All right, and let's go to adjourn. Take a motion in a second. Mike and Amanda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.